Good morning. I would like to welcome everyone to the public workshop meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, October 4th, 2010. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Please approve the amendments.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. This morning, in our work session, we have several items related to text amendments of the ULDC, and I know we've had a number of people sign up for public comment. Because this is a workshop meeting and not a public hearing where these items will be officially adopted, we've asked that during the planning and zoning section, during the presentation of these, for discussion purposes only, they will not be opened up to public comment at that time. However, during the public comment portion of this meeting, we ask that those citizens who signed up to come forward and speak on each one of these that we have talked about this morning. There will be a public hearing on this matter, I believe, scheduled for October the 18th, at which time, during that discussion in the meeting, then public comment will be accepted at that time as well. With that being said, we're going to move to the first item, which is a discussion regarding an amendment to Chapter 2, Table 2.03.03, and cross-referencing sections regarding social, cultural, or religious assembly uses of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. Our presenters, Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, and Sherri Hobson Matthews, Planning and Zoning Director, and that's Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair.
Chairman, good morning, Commissioners.
As noted, last month, Sherri and I brought a few items to the board, items that have been brought to our attention, various areas, citizens or developers, professional folks, regarding a few different areas within our text, ULDC text. And as we were directed last month to go back and revisit those particular ordinances and come up in proposed language of proposed text amendments, that's what we've done, working with Sherri and her staff, as well as the building department with Bert and his staff and code enforcement and DOT, like to propose the following. We've looked at several areas within the ULDC and proposed the following. We'll kind of walk through these one by one, taking the first one. Churches to be located, and, I'm sorry, not just churches, but rather, let me see if I got it right. Social, cultural, or religious assembly uses such as churches or similar religious facilities, lodges, event facilities, children and youth centers, and museums, aquariums, zoological parks, and convention centers, as are permitted within M1 and M2 zoning districts. As our ULDC currently states, they are not permissible uses. None of those uses are permissible within the M1 and M2. And Steph has gone back and taken a look at that section, and the proposed amendment would create a provision which would allow for the aforementioned social, cultural, and religious assembly uses as conditional uses within the M1 and M2 zoning districts, along with applicable supplemental standards that would have to be adhered to as well. And you have that example, a draft of that text amendment in your book.
Mr. Bowman?
Basically, if it's like an industrial park or something of that nature, and they was wanting to do a church, or a temporary, some kind of having a temporary church, something, they could do that under this.
Yes, sir. And the request we've heard quite a bit lately is, a lot of it coming from industrial areas where they're asking, what they're saying is, a lot of, they're not able to lease out a lot of their space, but they are getting a lot of requests for churches in because of their relatively low lease rates. So they've asked for the ability to be able to locate a church within an M1 and M2 zoning. And currently, again, as our ordinance currently states, it does not allow for that. As I stated, this provision, this amendment would make it possible with a conditional use, there are two sets of standards. There are a set of standards that currently exist for commercial buildings, and that list items like such as setbacks, screening of mechanical equipment, front facade that faces a public street. And there's also supplemental standards that exist for churches, which are, again, a little more stringent as far as buffers, setbacks, and building materials. The way we've proposed this amendment, they would still need to meet the requirements of the supplemental church standards. So in some cases, there's one we know of right now, someone's made an inquiry about, they've asked to be able to allow the church to come into the industrial area. They could go through conditional use to get that approval, however, they would still require a variance to meet some of the supplemental standards required for churches. And that's one point I wanted to make clear. There would be a conditional use, but there's also, in this case, there's another overlay of supplemental standards that churches are required to have. So, and that's one thing I want to kind of bring up for the board's attention. If you want to continue with that, they'd still need to meet those same conditions for a church, or if they would, once they get the conditional use, they would be able to be automatically variance in, from that standpoint.
End of the day, it would give them the option to at least go into an industrial park, and to be able to use it, providing they meet the criteria and the safety aspects and everything else that we'd see fit.
That's correct. That's correct. And again, I want to stress, it's not just churches. These are churches, social, civic centers as well.
Church just comes to my mind, I guess.
And just one point of clarification, the conditional use would not be a temporary use. So once the conditional use is granted, at that point, any other church that wants to locate on that facility that already has the conditional use would be allowed to. So it's just not a temporary nature.
Do you have a question?
Sure. In the past, the conditional use would follow the tenant. In other words, if a church was to get in an industrial park, when it left there, that conditional use would leave with the church, correct?
That is correct, because the zoning advisory board, we're typically at a zoning condition that once that church vacates, then that conditional use becomes null and void.
Okay.
Mr. Holder?
Yeah, no, if you're looking about the second or third page over, 4-37 is at the kind of the bottom of the page. Item number H, a parsonage. Well, my definition of a parsonage is the residence of the parson or the pastor. Now, how can a parsonage or a residence be allowed in an M1 zoning? And my next question is, is a residence allowed in M1 or M2 zoning? I think that might need to be taken out, because that is, what we're referring to basically is the church activity or the needing of a group of people. When you have parsonage, pastorium, or something of that nature, that's telling you, that's the housing quarters for your pastor. And I don't know that that's what we intend or not. You see what I'm saying?
I do. And I think you're absolutely correct. I don't think we'd want to have a residential use within an industrial area.
In on M1 or M2 zoning, I don't think that's the intent of what we're trying to do.
And I think we can change that. We can make it clear in the table of standards, just saying that under M1 and M2, the only uses that shall be allowed will be for the church activities only. And I think the definition allows for accessory uses and structures, so we would have to change that entire definition. So we could change it in the table to specify that, that no residential uses shall be allowed.
I'm just asking this for clarification, because it does open up a different tangent, because it allows residential, at that point, for someone to occupy our space as residents, and not for congregations.
Right. No, it's a good point. We'll make that adjustment before we bring it back to the board.
Mr. Bowman?
Mike, with moving away from the church issue and moving into the private academic school and some of the other issues there, it seems that, and I'm sure that they would have to follow the same process that anyone else would have to follow as a school, such as occupancy loads, egress, being able to get out, protected egress, sprinkler systems, the whole nine yards. That would, all of that would, they would have to bring, actually, you know, get an architect involved and bring a set of drawings and say, this is what we want to do.
That's correct. That's correct.
And then the other thing is, I would, athletic fields, and industrial parks, and M1 and M2, with a lot of transportation issues coming in and out, is that something we need to think about?
Yeah, I know this speaks to youth centers. You talking about separate inside from this, athletic fields?
Yeah, what's happened is, a lot of churches, and I won't specifically call out any churches, but churches that have schools associated with them, they are required to have athletic facilities. And I think what we can do with this ordinance amendment is, under the M1 and M2, just propose that no ancillary uses shall be allowed. It shall only be for religious activities. So that would eliminate any type of accessory uses, any type of athletic fields, the parsonage. The only thing that they would be able to do is utilize the existing structure for the religious activities internal to that facility. So we can amend the ordinance to specify that.
Yeah.
But under the current ordinance, a church can have a school that is associated with the church, and then they would be allowed, I mean, they would have to provide some type of athletic facilities.
Well, I was thinking more along the lines of what, I think it's Haran Bay that's looking at a charter school. I was thinking more along the lines of, hey, a charter school coming in there, and they may need something, you know, trying to move away from the church issue and put it into another issue altogether that could come to pass because of it. And that being said, I think that you're required to, a charter school is required to have some athletic facilities. I don't know what all that includes. But, so I would just be concerned with kids and eighteen wheel trucks, so, you know, I don't think they mix up too well. But that's something I think needs to have a little attention, so.
That's also a good point. And just so you know, athletic fields that are, as it's currently listed on our ULDC, they are an approved use within M1 and M2 with supplemental standards. So there's a list of supplemental standards that they need to meet before they'd be allowed within an M1, M2. So, and you're right, the one at Haran Bay, we're looking at it right now, in fact, and they are required to have some sort, some type of recreational, recreational activity area. So, we're studying that right now. What I had at that point?
I have a question. I have the same thought. If you had a gymnastic club came in and did a gymnastic facility, which is usually indoors, and along with that did a batting cages indoors, and along with that did a indoor soccer field, because they do indoor soccer, how would that all tie together?
In this case, as youth centers, well, I think that'd be tied between somewhere with youth centers, and there's also additional requirements for, let me make sure I got that right, recreational, there's a separate category for recreational centers. And I think those are covered under supplemental agreements.
That's correct.
Sherri, you want to just?
Yes, we have it under amusement, sports, and recreation establishments. And they would not be permissible under the M1 and M2. But we do have a, and that's what I'm looking for, a category. We had a similar request to come in for a gymnasium under M1 and M2.
Commissioner, are you saying you would like to see them allowed within M1, M2?
I think the presence is there, Michael. If you were riding down McDonough Parkway, you see those indoor gymnastics facilities there, you see an indoor skate park down through there, that's an industrial-type M1 setting or M2 setting down through there. I know the majority of that sits in the city of McDonough, but the presence is already there.
Right.
And if it's all contained within a building within an industrial park, I don't see a problem.
They also have it over there with Bailey Mill, where we got that, that's M1.
That's the only property where the jump is, and there's fitness centers and stuff in there, and, so, I think we've clearly set the presence there. I would like to see it incorporated in that, because where else would you want to put some of that stuff if you're renting square footage in an industrial park for your club or your business? If it's private, social sports club. One last thing, Michael, I don't know how this will be incorporated, but what about an indoor shooting range? And that's coming up, because I know when somebody's talking about doing an indoor shooting range in the county. Where would that be commercially at? Is that strictly C3?
Yeah, I don't think, right now, it's currently listed, don't have it.
We don't, we currently don't have a designation for it.
Shouldn't that be considered in this same amendment, because it's still in the sporting clubs?
Yeah, particularly if we know it's coming up. You know, right now, the, to your point, Commissioner, amusement, sports, recreational establishment are permitted uses in all the C districts, MU, mixed use, and the IAC, but it is not listed under the M1 and M2. So I think those types of uses, indoor shooting, skate park, cheering, types of cheering schools, I think that would be.
Stuff like that. They're in M zonings right now.
Right. And if you'd like, we can go back and consider that and add that into this list as well, as a supplemental with a, again, as a conditional use, in this case. That's what we're proposing now, listing all those conditional uses. Or just with supplemental standards. Because what we propose right now is the allowance of the churches, the zoos, the youth centers, in M1, M2 with a conditional use.
Okay, for instance, the jumping thing on Dallas Mill Road, do they have a conditional use, or are they just an M1 and M2 zoning?
Right now, they are just M1 and M2 with no conditional use.
And I wouldn't see the need to put a conditional use attached to it, if you already got the presence there.
And that's, now, you're referring just to the recreational activities.
Correct.
Okay.
And we have had, over the last six or eight months, two requests that have come in, business license for gymnasiums in M1 and M2. And I think what we've done as a staff is evaluated the requests as a type of educational training facility or business professional services, because they are actually offering training to the individuals that are coming in, be it gymnastics, be it dance. So we haven't not allowed those uses to go, and we've actually been allowing them under M1. And the whole idea is, they'd need the warehouse space for the type of uses that they're proposing, so we have been allowing them.
Same thing with a firing range, which would be indoor training.
We couldn't look at it that way. We just haven't had any requests that have come in. But what we've tried to do is look at the definitions that are in our code to kind of make, or to make it where the individuals, we're not denying them, but we can kind of put them in a category that would be sufficient under that zoning. I don't see a reason why it would not be allowed under the M1.
I think it's something we hadn't considered before. So what we'll look at for recreational activities to include indoor firing ranges, allowed outright within M1 and M2 with supplemental standards, and we'll go back as a staff and develop some supplemental standards to propose to the board. If that'll work.
Any other questions or comments on this particular amendment? Okay, this is a non-action item, and I know we have a couple of individuals that would like to speak about this during the public comments section of the meeting before we adjourn into executive session. All right, if there are no more questions on that one, the next item is also an amendment to Chapter 4, Section 4.03.31, industrialized and modular buildings of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code, and that's going to be Exhibit Number Two.
Currently, the ULDC does not allow for industrialized or modular buildings within the, they allow for them within, they allow for industrialized and modular homes as permitted uses within the residential zoning districts, R8 through R5. There have been growing requests from business owners regarding the allowance of industrialized and modular buildings within office, commercial, and industrial zoning districts. The proposed amendment would create a provision allowing industrial modular buildings as permitted uses within the following zoning districts, O-N-I, C1, C2, C3, mixed use, M1 and M2, subject to applicable zoning district and supplemental standards, and an architectural review approved by the Henry County Architectural Review Committee. So in this case, we're saying to permit them outright within the commercial and industrial areas without having to go through a conditional use. It's slightly different from the last, last request. But we do think it's important that we make the provision in there that they would have to go through a review committee to be reviewed, to make sure that they're compatible with the surrounding areas.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Bowman?
So what that would mean, I think you and I have talked about this one over on 138, 42.
Yes.
And that one is the, the folks that have the car lot, that they don't have enough room for their people, and they're selling vehicles, and, the only thing I want to be sure of is that we, that we allow it in cases such as that, but we don't go into, say, an industrial park or office park and allow that type of use, you know, besides somebody that said to build a building. And I think, Mike, you and I have talked about that, I just want to make sure that we're real clear on that, that it has to match whatever's in the area, and if there's other, if that type of construction is in there, then that's okay.
Right. And that's why we set the provision up for the Architectural Review Committee, to make sure that they go out and physically look at the surroundings, make sure whatever's being proposed is compatible with what's currently out there at the time.
And that particular car lot's in my district, and that would be, they need space.
Absolutely.
They need space, and.
And I was thinking, we started reviewing this, didn't know why it hadn't been addressed previously without something that was certainly in need within the county, and wanted to kind of clean this up.
So it's basically what you and I have talked about?
That's correct. That's correct. It's making that allowance to put industrial modular buildings within the commercial or industrial areas. That's all.
Mr. Holder?
This, I mean, this is a workshop session, and this question that I'm going to ask is a little bit of a tick off center of what we're dealing with today, but it brings to mind questions that I've had from citizens, and I'm sure the commissioners have too. When we're talking about a modular building, and we're going to call it, it can be an accessory structure for your home, it could be for, is, for a car lot, or it could be for any industrial building. Don't expect an answer immediately, but I would like an answer. Why, if I went to Lowe's, or I went to anybody that had a pretty fab building, I would not have to have a permit to put it on my place, on my property. But if I stick build it, and I go out to build a building on my property, it could be the same size, larger, smaller, or whatever, then I have to have a permit. I'd just like to know the why of that one. Because I can buy one and bring it today, and no permits required. But you don't have to answer that now, because it is kind of a tick off of what we're talking about today.
Right.
This is a workshop meeting, but I would like an answer to that.
Yeah, and I can, I think I kind of know part of the reason behind that, but I'll double check and confirm, and I'll bring that answer to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Does any other board member have a question pertaining to this one? All right, if not, we're going to move on to Item C, which is the discussion regarding an amendment to Chapter 7, Section 7.03.01, temporary structures and uses during construction. And that's going to be Exhibit Number Three.
All right. Want to go? Currently, Section 7.03.01B of the ULDC states that temporary buildings related to subdivision development shall be removed when eighty percent of all lots are occupied by completed homes or within four years, whichever comes first. What we are, well, again, what we're experiencing in the county and nationwide with the current economic downturn that we're in, we're seeing a number of subdivisions that have either begun or at some state of, they've begun construction but have not been completed. And we've had one case recently where the construction trailer was brought out during the beginning of the, of the construction of the subdivision, and subsequently has gone on, it's existed there, as slow, as the building slowdown occurred, the trailer remained, and it's gone beyond the timeframe indicated here. And so there's been some, we've received some comments as staff, asking that there be some consideration for extending that, the current four-year or eighty percent thresholds that currently exist. What we've proposed is a provision that would allow the building department, either the director or this designated, to grant a one-time, one-year extension administratively. So for those who, if this, if this condition exists within the subdivision, the, that developer, landowner, or builder, whomever owns the property, could come in and make a request of the building department for a one-year extension beyond where they, beyond the four years. Any subsequent extension beyond that would require coming before the board and making a request before the board. We kind of tailored this in much the same way as we do moving house, moving homes, where you're allowed to come in, make an extension for the time that's allowed, so with a slightly longer timeframe, so. That is our recommendation.
Michael, within that request, would there also be the inspection to go out and look at the facility and make sure that it's not falling apart and overgrown and an eyesore?
Yes. And there are some provisions specific for temporary homes that state, and I think it states in here that as long as, one-time, one-year extension administratively, as long as the minimum requirements are met for a temporary building. And some of those requirements do say those very same things, Chairman.
All right, just as long as there's some, you know, review in there, that's the main concern, because some of those, you know, a lot of times builders will buy used modulators or whatever, and they're not always very eye appealing, and that's the first thing you see when you come into a subdivision, and I could understand why some residents might not like that to be the first impression someone gets of their neighborhood.
Yeah, it states that, in addition, the proposed construction building shall meet all tie-down requirements for mobile structures, contract for sewage, pump out, and a list of, you know, A through H lists all the different requirements that would need to be met as well.
This kind of sales trailer, right?
That's correct.
Like the sales trailer.
Yeah, and there were some questions that were, questions that were asked, whether or not we're talking about sales trailers or perhaps model homes. Model homes, by their very nature, aren't temporary structures, they're intended that they would stay. So these would be the more the sales or construction trailers that you typically see at the entrance of a subdivision, or that's used for, again, to promote the subdivision and make sales and meet with clients.
I know that we've got so many subdivisions that are sitting with just a few houses built in it, and if a trailer's been sitting there a number of years, and it's overgrown or something like that, there may be an issue with that. Need it to be cleaned up. I'm not saying that's the case, but you know, with it, once the economy does come back, they're going to have to have something there to be able to sell the houses. And so, I don't know if we, do you make them move it now, and then if the economy comes back, they come back and put another one there? Is that, that's kind of the way I'm seeing this, is the way that we're set up now, they would just have to move the thing, and then when they started selling houses, they had nothing to work out of there. But I think that the key issue is to the resident who lives there and who is in the community, that the thing is kept up and it's presentable. It is not an eyesore, it's not something that, you know, that they, that they wouldn't want in their community. I think that would be the issue, in my opinion, if it's, the way that I see it, if it's, if it's there and it hadn't been taken, taken care of or kept up.
Right.
But the way that I'm understanding what you're saying is that now they would have to move it, and if they started selling houses next year, or six months from now, they really had no place to sell out of. I guess unless they went to a real estate office such as, you know, so I don't know. I think that's.
And we've heard it from both sides. And we've heard from the developer, builder side, you know, where, you know, again, they're faced with hardship, but they are still, in some cases, are still actively trying to promote and sell houses within that subdivision, albeit as slow as it is. And we've heard from the residents that say, you know, hey, nothing's happening, and it continues to sit there, so, certainly it.
Kind of both sides of the thing, really. I don't.
You know, this would, again, in light of all that's going on economically, and this would allow for, A, an extension, but you have to still, it has to be brought up, make sure it's meeting all the minimum requirements, and it needs, you know, needs to be maintained, and beyond that, one year, after that, have to come before the board, and that would be a public hearing, and that would give residents an opportunity to speak or voice their, their being in favor or their opposition either one at that time. Okay.
I think it's, I think staff did a good job in covering themselves and protecting the county and the homeowner by saying, so long as the minimum requirements meet the temporary building, which could include and would include landscape, the maintenance of the building, the. building, the, the appeal of the building, and then it's the discretion of that person, whomever it may be, to either grant or deny this extension. Other than that, they're good for four years, and when, of course, most of them are at the four-year level now due to the economy. But I think that you, that last phrase of that sentence certainly protects us, and it gives a discretion to that person, which could be someone, the building department director or someone, to either say yes or no. And then it, after the one year, if they're not, if the things have not turned around, then it becomes an issue with this board. Do we grant another one, or do we say no, it's time to go?
Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, we do have a citizen that will be speaking during the public comment portion of the meeting on exhibit number three. Moving on to D, we have discussion regarding an amendment to chapter seven, section seven dot zero four dot zero seven, special limitations, home occupation signs of the ULDC, and that's going to be exhibit number four.
Currently, section seven point oh four oh seven I, home occupation signs of the ULDC, states that one non-illuminated professional or business nameplate not exceeding two square feet in area is permitted on the premises of a business. Recently, a code enforcement issue came up regarding a home occupation signage that was brought before the board for discussion back in, again, September. And what we've looked at is, we have situations throughout the county where we have those who have a home business and they are located outside of a subdivision, some that are located within a subdivision, some that are located without, outside of a subdivision. And by the very nature of a home, a home-based, home occupation business, you know, what we're, it allows for someone to operate a business, get a business license and operate a business within their home in such a way that does not bring a commercial feel to that residential area, particularly within a subdivision. As we discuss this as a staff, we certainly saw a distinction between those that are located within a subdivision as opposed to those that are located without, outside of a subdivision. You may have, and in some cases we have, individuals on multiple acres of land that do have a small business, and they still want to be able to promote, let people know that they, you know, where they are. In a subdivision setting, certainly a two-square-foot sign or placard may be, maybe, thought that was, that's still most appropriate, because again, you don't want to be too obtrusive within a subdivision. But within a, in a more rural setting, where they have in excess of, I think we said in excess of two acres, we thought it would be appropriate, that it would not be too obtrusive to have a larger sign to promote their business, let people know that, where they are and the fact that they have a business, so. And looking at this, we went through and staff is proposing language that would allow home occupations located in an RA zoning district outside of a subdivision with a minimum of two acres to have a sixteen-square-foot sign. In essence, a four-by-four sign with a maximum above grade height of six feet. The sign would be permanent in nature and must adhere to the assigned submittal requirements and sign permitting process. So they would still have to come through the same signed submittal process, it'd be reviewed by, by staff, but it allows them to have a slightly larger sign than the requisite two-square-foot sign that's required, and that requirement would still, would continue to remain in place for those home occupations located within, inside a subdivision.
Does any board member have a question or comment related to this amendment?
I've got a couple of clarifications. Like Cotton Fields is a subdivision and the lots are, a lot of the lots are over two acres, how would that, would that be considered under the subdivision as opposed to, because acreage would be there?
Right, but they, they would still be located within a subdivision.
So that one, that would take care of that, and then of course, subdivision covenants would also take precedence over that, right?
That's correct. While the county does not enforce covenants, they would still, you know, you can have a, any subdivision can have an overlying set of covenants, that they would be, any resident who buys within a subdivision would be, be held to, again, but we don't, that's outside of our purview.
Okay. Because we have an issue, we have an issue now in a subdivision on the north end of the county that I believe that this issue is now going to the Supreme Court of Appeals, and it's, it's based on covenants. I just want to be sure that, you know, we didn't put the county in a position of where we would have an issue there. Thank you.
Anyone else with a question or comment pertaining to this amendment? Well, moving on to the last one, it's going to be a discussion regarding an amendment to chapter seven, section seven dot zero four dot zero seven, special limitations, entrance and subdivision signs, and that's going to be exhibit number five.
Currently, section seven point oh four point oh seven allows entrance and subdivision signs on private property, but it states that it may not be placed in the right-of-way. However, there is an exception, that signs are permitted in the right-of-way, in the center median, if the following requirements can be met, sign has two faces, the location has been approved by, in writing by the Henry County Department of Transportation, and the applicant agrees to be responsible for maintenance and repair of the entrance sign ensures that the existence of the entrance sign is documented on the final plat for the development. The proposed amendment would repeal the, the exception provision and allow entrance or subdivision signs that currently allows them in the center median, and kind of revert back to the fact that, back to the, in essence, it would just take the exception out, it will only allow for signs outside of the right-of-way.
Any questions or comments on this one? If not, again, all of these items will be on the October eighteenth agenda for an official vote to be taken at that time, and if there are any more concerns between now and then, if you would please share those with staff, and hopefully we'll be able to move through and get these taken care of. Thank you.
And we'll address your comments, and we'll have an answer for your question tomorrow, Commissioner Holder. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on now to the public comment section of our meeting. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting, and of course, we've had several that have signed up with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Citizens will be able to address the board for a maximum of five minutes. And the first citizen I'd like to call is Vicki Vanderhoek of twelve hundred Meredith Park McDonough, and she is here to speak on exhibit one, which was the M1 church zoning. Good morning.
I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Vicki Vanderhoek, and I've been a real estate investor since nineteen seventy-five, and right now, I believe desperate times call for desperate measures. I'm here because I would like to put a church into my warehouse. I have twelve hundred Meredith, I have two seven thousand square foot warehouses. You might know it because John Deere used to rent the front building from me, and since they moved out. In two thousand and six, I paid nine percent of my gross income to property taxes. Now I'm paying thirty-five percent of my income, and I consider myself one of the very lucky real estate investors here in the county, because I do have some income, so I can pay my property taxes. Regarding the church, as a, as a real estate investor and a landlord, the last person I want to rent my building is a church. They, they get lower rents, they have, they're notorious for not being able to pay the rent that they get, they have, the whole building has to be reconstructed for this. However, my building has been vacant since two thousand and seven, I've lost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in rent, and the only people that are coming to me to rent my building are churches, and that's why I'm here. And according to Michael Harris, when I just heard him speak about the conditional use permit, with my property, it still does not meet these requirements. Properties that are manufactured to be an M1 or an M2 and built for that, they probably have a thirty-foot setback, his CUP is fifty. My property does not meet that. He wants four sides not to be any, to be metal. My property has a brick front and three metal sides, so my property does not meet that requirement either. And let me see, and also, the way it stands, the conditional use plus a variance, churches that come to me, they want to know immediately, they ask me, like I'm omnipotent, to tell them, does it need sprinkling? Does it, will it pass the variance? Will it pass the CUP? And if they have to physically come to the board and present to the board, present to planning, and it takes them three months, first off, they lose their congregation not having a place to meet for three months. Secondly, they don't have the money to go through the process to do this. So I'm hoping that when you do the conditional use permit, one, that it's not just temporary for the first church moving there, like they had, like they mentioned, that the first church that would come to you and you say, yes, we can have conditional use permit for this church. And so if they move in and they reconfigure the, the building to become a church, that means that the next people coming in would more than likely be a church. Churches are easier to rent to, the rents are lower, they can move in there, but if you do not allow a CUP to continue on for that to be a church, and another church come to me with a building that I have that looks like a church, is a church, but now you say when the first church moves out, that the conditional use permit is no longer valid, that seems to be defeating the entire purpose of this process. And if you have to get, get a conditional use permit, plus you have to get a variance, are they going to hire an attorney to do this? How is this going to work? So I'm hoping that on October eighteenth, when you review this and you vote for this, that you can make it so that maybe even under the M1 and M2 standings, you just list, a church needs to meet these requirements, and you can be a church and you can be here. Like I said, I'm not really a proponent of this, but I don't know how many vacant buildings you guys see out there, but if you drive down forty-two and you look at retail space see-through places out there, I really hope that the board, the chair, the board here would actually take into consideration all those landlords out there that are desperate to be making the tax payments to the city to keep you guys in business. And I believe that that's all I have to say at this moment, but I'd really appreciate your help. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderhoek. The next citizen that has signed up for public comment is also commenting on exhibit number one, Mike McIntyre of two forty-five Happy Hollow Road in Hampton. Good morning.
Excuse me. Thank you, Chairman Mathis, and Ms., Mrs. Vanderhoek has been very eloquent to present basically my concerns. Mr. Harris has covered most of the things, the questions that we had. It's eye-opening to find that Ms. Vanderhoek would like to have us in there last, but hopefully we can get in there first. I would just like to also state, as she commented, that churches love industrial sites. The rents are lower. If we have to move into retail space, basically we're competing with a retailer who can pay ten, fifteen, twenty dollars a square foot. And I got to tell you, new churches with fifty to seventy-five to a hundred members can afford to pay ten and fifteen and twenty dollars a square foot. And that's what makes industrial locations very attractive for a new church. And so as Ms. Vanderhoek stated, when you review this and make your decisions, the one thing that I would just hope that you would keep in mind is that if we have to meet the same variances that a church building, a new building on property would have to meet, then that's probably still going to eliminate us from the M1 zoning, things such as steel siding and different other supplements that were listed. And that's really all I have. Most, most everything has been answered and taken care of, and I really appreciate Mr. Harris's involvement and Chairman Mathis's involvement, and hope we can get this settled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. The final citizen that has signed up for public comment is Melissa Jones of seven twenty-nine Grove Point Circle, and she's here to speak on exhibit number three. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm speaking in regards to the temporary construction trailers. I've spoken with Mr. Harris and several of the staff, did watch the video from September seventh in regards to this issue. We have a general thing going on as far as this amendment goes for contractors and developers and homeowners, and yet a specific issue as far as our subdivision goes. As far as generally with that amendment going through, we would hope that the board would recognize that sales trailers, construction trailers, and modular homes are completely different things than model homes that are permanent. Sales trailers, construction trailers, those are completely different things. A sales trailer is needed to sell, a construction trailer is only needed to build. As far as the specific comments that were made in the September seventh meeting by Mr. Oglesby, that trailer that has been in Grove Point subdivision has been there for fourteen years. The permits were given on August sixth of ninety-six. That timeframe has run out long ago. Even with an amendment to this code, that trailer should have been removed ten years ago. We understand that at this point, the economy is bad, we will agree, the economy is bad, but it's bad for homeowners as well, and when you're looking to try and sell your home in a subdivision, you don't want to have a construction trailer, a dilapidated construction trailer at that, sit there for ten years as people are coming in and out, seeing that first thing, as Chairman Mathis said. You don't want your subdivision to look like a mobile home community. Mr. Holder, Commissioner Holder had made a comment at the September seventh meeting, we would just kind of like to see corrected in some way. He had said that although it's not aesthetically pleasing, and we agree it's not, that that person that has that trailer may have provided that person a home. We don't agree with that. We feel as board members and as community members that these homes were not given to us by that person, the person that owns that trailer was paid good money to make that home, and the people in our community who work hard to earn their money provide themselves their home, not the person that has the trailer. So we'd like that corrected. Because this trailer has been here so long, and we understand there's an amendment coming up, we would like separate wording concerning sales trailer versus construction trailer versus modular home or model home, because they're so different, and temporary versus permanent. A model home, Commissioner Holder had brought up the what-ifs of model homes having to be closed, well, model homes are permanent, they're not temporary. So we would like that really specified in any wording coming up. And if you amend the code, we'd like to ask for wording as far as an incentive for that developer to move that trailer so that homeowners don't have to look at it for fourteen, fifteen years, whether it be a fine or something for that person to get that trailer out of In this economy, with things having gone down like they have and building not being able to happen, give somebody six months. If there's no development, no construction, fine, six months, you move it until, you know, resumption of building maybe. We'd like that in the wording. If you're going to amend it, we, we would like to see that. As far as our specific situation, we have many, many letters and things from homeowners here asking for our particular trailer to be moved. It's an eyesore, it's an embarrassment, people are not being able to sell their homes because we have this trailer there for fourteen years, and people who have written the board and let them know that they almost didn't move into our community because of that, that trailer being there. So we'd really like to see, in our specific instance, this particular trailer moved to a different location. Mr. Oglesby does own land behind our subdivision, it's platted, planned and developed to be a completely different subdivision, he could move it without too much difficulty to a location there where it wouldn't be within our community's view. We've had to look at it for ten years, we'd really like the ULDC code enforced and this situation taken care of. As far as the code being amended, we'd really like specific language as far as the difference in buildings. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and I know that staff will certainly take your comments into consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. County Manager, any comments?
No.
Ms.?
The upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, October fifth at nine AM, we have a regular board meeting. Monday, October the eighteenth at nine AM, we have a regular meeting, and also Tuesday, October nineteenth at six thirty PM, this is also a regular commission meeting. At this time, I do need a motion to convene into executive session for potential or pending litigation, personnel matters, or land acquisition. Motion by Mr. Steny, second by Mr. Bazler, all in favor? Motion.
Motion carries five zero. I need a motion to reconvene into public session. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bazler, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. I need a motion for approval, approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion by Mr. Holder.
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, we're going to need to amend the agenda out of public necessity for three items. Mr. Holder?
I'd like to approve, and I think they have to be done individually.
Yes.
Approved resolution to authorize the acquisition of point two-three-eight acres of permanent easement, more or less, and point zero-one-zero acres of driveway easement, more or less, in landlot one sixty-nine of the seventh district of Henry County, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the provisions of OCGA Section thirty-two dash three dash four through thirty-two dash three dash nineteen.
I have a motion for approval by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next one is a resolution to authorize acquisition of point zero-zero-four acres of right-of-way, more or less, and point one-six-six acres of permanent easement, more or less, in landlot one sixty-nine of the seventh district, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the provisions of OCGA Section thirty-two dash three dash four through Section thirty-two dash three dash nineteen.
I have a motion for approval by Mr. Holder, and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next one is a resolution to authorize the acquisition of point zero-three-six acres of right-of-way, more or less, and point two-three-five acres of temporary easement, more or less, and point zero-two-one acres of driveway easement, more or less, in landlot one sixty-nine of the seventh district of Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the provisions of OCGA Section thirty-two dash three dash four through Section thirty-two dash three dash nineteen.
I have a motion by Mr. Holder, and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Roark, all in favor? Motion carries five zero, we stand adjourned.